The House is now in session.
The members will please rise and be led in prayer by the Reverend Dr. Wayne Faison, Senior Pastor, East End Baptist Church Suffolk, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America, led by the Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Let us pray. Lord, we come today thanking you, Father, for each delegate that is represented here in the communities and constituencies that they represent. We pray for their families and we want them to know how thankful we are of the sacrifices that are being made for the greater good. We ask that you would lead them in their decisions that not only is going to impact today, but also is going to impact tomorrow, but not only impact tomorrow, but impact generations to come. Lord, we do pray for humanity, for the sake of humanity, that we experience more unity, more solidarity, more compassion, especially toward one another. Lord, we pray for a sense of advancement in terms of an advancement in our strength, our advancement in our love, and advancement in our peace, so that we can be a greater humanity, a greater people. Father, we know that we are living in unprecedented time, but we are just grateful that we serve a God that knows how to lead us through, and so therefore we thank you. Thank you for being our God. Thank you for being our Creator. Thank you for being our God. And, Lord, we pray this prayer in the name that is above all names. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and law.
The members will please answer the roll call by indicating their presence on the electronic voting device. Madam Clerk.
I'll call the names of those who I don't see voting yet. Adams, L.R.
Present.
Delegate Adams is present. Delegate Bagby.
Present.
Delegate Bagby is present. Delegate Bell.
I'm here. I'm showing up on my screen.
Delegate Bell is present. Delegate Brewer. Delegate Brewer, I saw you.
Present.
Delegate Brewer is present. Delegate Delaney.
Present.
Delegate Delaney is present. Delegate Edmonds.
Here.
Delegate Edmonds is present. Delegate Hayes.
Present.
Delegate Hayes is present. Delegate Head.
Present.
Delegate Head is present. Delegate Hudson. Delegate Keem.
There?
Keem is present.
Delegate Keem is present. Delegate LaRocque.
Present.
Delegate LaRocque is present. Delegate Marshall.
Present.
Delegate Marshall is present. Delegate O'Rourke.
Present.
Delegate O'Rourke is present. Delegate Simons. Delegate Van Vaul... Delegate Simons is present. Delegate Van Valkenburg.
Present.
Delegate Van Valkenburg is present. Delegate Ware.
Present.
Delegate Ware is present. Delegate Wilt.
Present.
Delegate Wilt is present.
Present.
Madam Clerk, Delegate Hudson is present.
Delegate Hudson is present.
The Clerk will please close the roll.
Madam Speaker, Aquaram is present.
Pursuant to House Rule 3, I have examined and approved the Journal for the House of Delegates for Wednesday, October 14, 2020. Motions and resolutions under Rule 39 pursuant to Rule 40 are now in order. The Clerk will please announce the First Morning Hour Order of Business, including any Clerk's announcements or communications.
First Morning Hour Order of Business, a few announcements. Please mute your mics unless you're speaking. Please turn on your cameras so that we can see you. The call-in number for technology issues is 804-698-1560. And if you're participating by phone, please use *6 to mute and *6 to unmute. Pursuant to House Rule 40, the Speaker requests members to use their Request to Speak buttons for First Morning Hour items.
The Delegate from Suffolk, Delegate Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for the purpose of introduction.
Delegate Jenkins, you have the floor.
Ladies and gentlemen of the House, this evening, we are led in our invocation by Dr. Wayne Faison. Dr. Faison has been the Senior Pastor at East End Baptist Church in Suffolk, Virginia since 2014. He also serves as the National Coordinating Officer for the Accident Team at the Baptist General Association of Virginia in Richmond, Virginia since 2001. Prior to moving to Virginia, Dr. Faison served as Senior Pastor of Canaan Missionary Baptist Church in Flemington, Florida. He responded to his call to ministry in 1992, licensed in 1993, and ordained in 1997 at New St. John Baptist Church in Ocala, Florida. Dr. Faison received his Doctorate in Ministry degree in Black Church Leadership in 2001, a Master's degree in Divinity, in Missions, Evangelism, and Church Growth in 1996 at the Southern Baptist Theology Seminary in Louisville, Kentucky. He received a Bachelor's degree in Science and Mathematics in 1984 from the University of Florida. He also received a mini-NBA from the University of Richmond in 2014. Prior to responding to the call to preach the gospel, he served as Vice President of Commercial Banking at Am South Bank in Florida from 1996 to 2001, and as Assistant Vice President and Investment Officer at Mid-State Federal Savings Bank from 1984 to 1993 in Ocala, Florida. Dr. Faison is married to Carmen Clark Faison, and through their union, they have two adult children, Andrea and Chastity. Dr. Faison loves spending time with his family, playing golf, exercising, reading, and writing. Dr. Faison is my friend, my brother, and shepherd in the gospel. I hope it is the will of the House to join me in giving Dr. Faison a warm welcome.
Thank you so much, Delegate Jenkins, and welcome again, Reverend Dr. Faison. Thank you for joining us today. That's a lot of education and a lot of degrees. Thanks for sharing with us today and for all that you do for the community. Welcome. The Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sickles.
Madam Speaker.
Yes, Delegate Sickles.
Madam Speaker, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for your motion.
Delegate Sickles, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As in honor of a great Lee District Fairfax County citizen who has left us, left this world, Will Jasper was born in 1936, and he's lived in Bush Hill for as long as I've known him, but he grew up in West Virginia. He leaves his wife of 56, Daryl Jasper, his daughter Nika and her husband Stephen, and his two twin grandchildren, Isaac and Samantha. He went to West Virginia State University and was the first cadet from that school to be, to receive a commission with the Army Medical Service Corps. In 2006, he was inducted into the West Virginia State ROTC Hall of Fame. In 1972, he received a Master of Science degree and managed information systems from the American University, and during his military career, he served in the Army Surgeon General's Office in Vietnam. And when he returned from Vietnam in the 101st and 82nd Airborne Divisions, he worked at Walter Reed after that and received the Bronze Star, the Army Commendation Medal, the National Defense Service Medal, the Air Vietnam Service Medal, and many other military honors. But I knew him mostly for his service in our community. When I met him, he was an officer of National Business Services, Inc., and then, and then with First Health Services, and finally with a Vice President of Dichroma. You know, he was a 20-year deacon at Alfred Street Baptist Church in Alexandria, and he served, as you know he would if you knew Will, on their Strategic Planning Committee and was a charter member of their Voices of Triumph Choir. He was a founding member of the Psi Phi Alpha, Psi Alpha, Alpha Chapter of Omega Psi Phi, and he served as the Third District Chaplain for the fraternity for 17 years and continued to hold the honorary title of Chaplain Emeritus. He was the founder of Project Manhood, a life skills program through which individuals within the Omega Psi Phi fraternity mentor young men ages of seven and 17. He worked in civic life so long, he was on the Redevelopment Housing Authority in Fairfax County, and he actually replaced me in 2003 as the trustee on the Fairfax County Library Board of Trustees. Anyway, we're going to miss him so much. And before I make a motion to adjourn in honor and memory of Willard Owen Jasper, Madam Speaker, I believe that I would like to recognize, or if you could recognize, the Delegate from my neighboring district in 44th, Delegate Paul Kriesak, for a few remarks on Will's life.
Absolutely. Thank you, Delegate Sickles. Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Kriesak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I also rise to speak to the resolution from Delegate Sickles in the memory of Mr. Will Jasper.
Delegate Kriesak, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Mr. Will Jasper, as you heard, he really was a very busy man, and you know what they say, if you want to get something done, ask a busy man, ask a busy person, and Will was that guy. You could always count on him. And one of the, just one of the nicest people you'd ever meet, a very gentle man that was, had a great, just was one of those people you could always count on and really cared about people. And I just wanted to say, I served with him on the Redevelopment of Housing Authority in Fairfax County for a number of years, where he served for 12 years, and we represented Southeast Fairfax County together. And, and he was, he spoke softly, but with compassion and kindness always. And just, he will be very, very mess by everybody in our community and all of the different organizations in his church. Everybody, I'm sure, will have many opportunities to celebrate his life when we return to normal, when we get back to our home districts. But the, I want to say also that his wife, Daryl, 56 years, wouldn't recognize her, and the two of them were always together. And I know, I send her, on behalf of the whole General Assembly, our condolences. So thank you very much, Delegate Sickles and Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Delegate Sickles and Delegate Kriesak. Delegate Sickles and Delegate Kriesak move that when the House adjourn, we do so in the honor and memory of William Owen Jasper. All those in favor of this motion shall please rise. Thank you, Delegates Kriesak and Sickles for sharing with us, and I know that William Owen Jasper's legacy will live on through Isaac and Samantha, and thank you for sharing with us today. The Clerk will please announce the next order of business.
Second Morning Hour Order of Business is not applicable today. The Third Morning Hour Order of Business also not applicable today. The Fourth Morning Hour Order of Business is recognition of member requests for points of personal privilege, and the Speaker requests members use their Request to Speak button to be recognized.
Does any member have any announcements or introductions or motions pursuant to Rule 39? The Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that the House stand in recess until 6:15.
Delegate from Alexandria, Leader Herring moves that the House stand in recess until 6:15. All those in favor of the motion shall say aye.
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 All those opposed, the House stands.
Aye.
The House stands in recess until 6:15.
All right, guys, give me a few.
One for you, one for Bob.
Thank you.
House will come to order. House will be at ease.
The House will please come to order. Madam Clerk.
House Calendar for October 16th. Memorial Resolutions. The resolutions to be adopted include the one listed on Page 1 of the calendar and the following House Resolutions. House Resolution 626. House Resolution 627. House Resolution 630. House Resolution 632. House Resolution 633. House Resolution 634. House Resolution 635. And these will be voted on in Block.
All those in favor of adopting and blocking memorial resolutions laid on the Speaker's table will please rise. The resolutions are agreed to.
Madam Speaker, commending resolutions that have been laid on the Speaker's table, the resolutions to be adopted in Block include the following House Resolutions. House Resolution 628. House Resolution 629. And House Resolution 631.
All those in favor of adopting and blocking the commending resolutions laid on the Speaker's table shall say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The resolutions are agreed to. Madam Clerk.
Madam Speaker, going to Conference Reports received on Page 3 of the calendar. Senate Bill 5007, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 19.2, 257, and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to criminal cases sentencing reform.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This conference report includes a delayed enactment of July 1st, 2021. And if I could speak to the conference report, Madam Speaker.
Leader Herring, you have the floor.
I encourage members to adopt this conference report. And the reason why is this is simple. Virginia only stands with Kentucky as a state that does not have a jury trial judge sentencing construct. I think this results in a lot of injustice and improper sort of basically bargaining power. And I'll just give you an example on why I say that. Assume there is a woman who's single, so has only one source of income that is her, and she's come from abusive relationship, does not get child support. She's working a lot of jobs, and she writes a check for food or clothing for her children, and the check bounces. She could actually be charged with uttering. And then she's faced at the prosecution with a Commonwealth attorney who offers a plea. The plea is, you know, you're going to face 10 years in prison if you go to trial, that's a possibility, or you accept a guilty plea, and, you know, we'll give you six months, or we'll give you two years. My concern, Madam Speaker, is that knowing that she will not be able to have sentencing by a judge, but that the jury will do the sentencing, and may not understand the unique circumstances that she was in, and that actually it was a mistake. I am concerned, Madam Speaker, that many Virginians are accepting plea deals because there's really no good option. You risk going to trial and have a huge sentence imposed. And this bill, I think, levels the playing field. It's, I think, it's just, it is right. It will make our criminal justice system stronger and better here in Virginia. And this is needed. This is a needed reform. Think about it again. We are the only state other than Kentucky that has a construct that we do right now. And I know there's a lot of discussion about cost. But I think this is the right thing. And with the delayed enactment, I think it will give us time to put a budget amendment in or anything like that, anything like that next year. So, Madam Speaker, and members, I hope that you support me, support my efforts, support the efforts of the patron and everyone who supported this, and join me in supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Herring. There are several people in the queue, but the House will be at ease for a few moments.
The House will come to order. Delegate from Prince William, Delegate Torian.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to speak to the conference report, please.
Chairman Torian, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, SB 5007 has garnered a lot of attention during this special session. And I want to take a moment and share with the House my perspective on legislation and how we address legislation when it comes to the Appropriations Committee. It has always been our intent and practice to address legislation that has a fiscal impact when it comes to the House Appropriations Committee. When there's money involved, we would like to know how much that legislation is going to cost us. We were faced with a situation this special session with SB 5007. It came to appropriations without the fiscal impact statement because it was still being determined by the Crime Commission. Therefore, we took the action that we did in the House. Obviously, there were those who disagreed with it, and they put a delayed enactment clause on it, opposed to going with the reenactment. And I took a hard stand on that because I really believed that we needed the reenactment so that we don't pass legislation without having some kind of idea of a cost. Madam Speaker, we put in the budget some resources that we would hope would go towards Delegate Herring's bill. Unfortunately, that bill did not come out of the Senate. And so therefore, we have resources available that can be gained to address SB 5007. I have been in contact with the Governor. He and I have discussed SB 5007 and recognize that we do have some resources that can go towards that. And he has pledged continual support in an effort to make sure that folks who are being served by our judicial system get the kind of service that they are deserving of. So therefore, I will stand and hope that my colleagues will stand with me in support of the conference report for SB 5007. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Torian. The delegate from Newport News, Delegate Mullen. Delegate Mullen? The delegate from Portsmouth, Delegate Scott.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Speaking to the conference report.
Delegate Scott, you have the floor.
One of the things, this, I'm standing in strong support of the conference report. One of the things that this bill will do is it will level the playing field for defendants against the overpowering power of the state who has all of the resources at their disposal. As a person who tries cases and represents defendants along with several others on both sides of the aisle, I think this is a bipartisan bill for fairness. Our Sixth Amendment right that a lot of us, we extol and treat it as it is and place it on the pedestal that it's supposed to be, that you would be judged by a jury of your peers. Unfortunately, in the state of Virginia, according to the recent Virginia State Citizen Commission report from 2019, only 1.3% of criminal cases actually go to a jury trial. That's abysmal, and it's very sad. The only other state that sentences the way that Virginia does out of the 50 is Breonna Taylor's Kentucky. That's the only other state that does it the way we do. This bill will allow a defendant to select to decide whether he will be judged by a jury or judged by a bench trial. And then at that point, he can also decide whether he'll be sentenced by a jury or be sentenced by the judge or bench trial. This is a revolutionary change in the way that we do sentencing. Some folks say, well, the cost will be astronomical. We only do a few hundred jury trials a year in the state of Virginia. Most folks think that we're running rampant with jury trials, but we're not. We're running rampant with plea deals. Well over 90% of criminal cases are decided by a plea agreement. And only a very small percentage are decided by a bench trial. And another, and the very small percentage of those, 1.3%, actually go to jury trial. We are in a position now where we can actually bring some justice to the state of Virginia and begin to end mass incarceration in our state. Just yesterday, I was in a court, a circuit court, defending a person who was accused of a robbery. The only evidence against him was that there was an eyewitness. And during that eyewitness's testimony and ID, they said it maybe was him or it looked like him. And then he picked a second person out of a six-pack, six defendants that he watched and said, well, it could be him. Based on that evidence and that evidence alone, this man who had decided to risk it all because with a robbery charge, a robbery offense, you face a minimum, if a jury convicts you, of five years, minimum. And you can face up to life if you go to jury trial. This is the decision that a person has to make on whether he will give up his right to a jury trial or plead out, and most plead out, even when they know they did not do it. And it's based on shaky identification. That is all of the evidence, no gun, no description. They searched his home, an ID that was shaky. That gentleman has been in jail now for over a year awaiting trial with COVID and other things. I'm going to ask my colleagues, let's begin to unravel and end this mass incarceration, this mass injustice. And if we really believe in freedom and liberty in our justice system, then we will trust our citizens. We will allow them to hear, we'll allow people to go and take advantage of the Sixth Amendment right to a jury trial without having to worry about the jury penalty. We know prosecutors use the jury as a penalty to force folks to take plea agreements. They have no option. This is a very difficult decision that folks have to make even when they know they're innocent. I'm going to end, and I'm going to end on this. A couple of years ago, I had another client who was facing 20 counts of forgery. He was facing up to 10 years per count, over 200 years that a jury could give him. The jury could also give him a $2,500 fine. That's how wide the risks were for him. It was like going into a Las Vegas casino and hoping that you didn't crap out. That's what Virginia's jury system is right now. And I pray that my colleagues will support this revolutionary change in our jury system and vote yes on SB 5007. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Scott. The delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Knight.
Madam Speaker, speaking to the conference report.
Delegate Knight, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I won't talk policy, other than SB 5007 about jury sentencing is in the Crime Commission to be studied. I'll talk about the fiscal implications of this bill. This bill has fiscal implications that are deemed indeterminate. That's what we got back from the staff, Department of Planning and Budget, and from appropriations. These costs can be between 50 and 200 million. Nobody knows. Let me emphasize, nobody knows. We don't have that kind of money in the budget. I believe waiting on this bill is a prudent course of action. We on the Appropriations Committee deal in real numbers. What we have here is an indeterminate number. We need to balance our budget. An indeterminate number is also cause for concern to our bond rating agencies. We don't want to jeopardize our AAA bond rating agency if this becomes a pattern of not putting real, just follow the numbers in the budget. We should have more certain numbers in the future. For these reasons, Madam Speaker, I would encourage the House to vote against the conference report.
The delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Born.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, with the delegate from Virginia Beach, ask her a question.
Would the delegate from Virginia Beach yield to a question?
Yes, ma'am, I yield.
The delegate yields. Delegate Born, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I would ask the delegate, he made reference to the Crime Commission study and that nobody knows the question. And he referenced 50 to 200 million dollars. So I guess my first question, Madam Speaker, would be where are those brackets coming from? How is he arriving at a potential cost of 50 to 200 if nobody knows the actual cost?
Delegate Knight.
Yes, yes, ma'am. I would answer the delegate that there was a study done in the city of Chesapeake that the population is roughly 235,000 people. They said the cost of the extra jurors would be about 230 to 240,000 dollars, only for the extra cost of jurors. So that equals $1 per person of population in Chesapeake. So if you extrapolate those numbers to the state of Virginia, we start with just the cost of the jurors of being 8.5 million dollars. Then we possibly have the cost of extra bailiffs, extra sheriff's deputies, extra time in the courtroom, possibly extra judges. Who knows if we have to pay these people overtime? What I did say was that it is an indeterminate number. Even the Department of Planning and Budget doesn't have a number. I don't see, when we're coming back in, in January and February, and they have a delayed enactment clause on this bill of July 1, I wanted to put a reenactment clause on this so we could visit it after we got more numbers. We can't do that. We can only vote this bill up or down. So because we don't know the numbers, I say, let's just wait, consider it when we do have possibly some more positive estimates on the numbers. But with the numbers that I raised a little bit before, that's where I got my brackets. Because you can do anything from jurors to what I said to, you know, I mean, I could go on and on and on. But I would be stretching it a little bit if I talked about maybe having to build another courthouse or two. I won't go that far, but we're talking real numbers here, sir.
Madam Speaker, would the delegate yield for another question?
Would the delegate yield?
Yes, ma'am.
Delegate yields.
Madam Speaker, I would ask the, I would ask the delegate whether or not he's aware that the Crime Commission really doesn't conduct cost studies.
Madam Speaker, to answer the gentleman, the Crime Commission, I felt like was going to deal with policy. What I was referring to is the Appropriations Staff and Department of Planning and Budget were the ones that I was looking for, for the numbers. So I absolutely do realize the Crime Commission deals with policy. I'm looking to Department of Planning and Budget to give me some numbers or some predictions of the numbers. That's all we deal with in the Appropriations Committee is real numbers, and they are the experts we trust. We do not do fiscal impact studies or fiscal impact implications on anything but these government agencies.
Madam Speaker, would the delegate yield for another question?
Would the delegate yield?
Yes, ma'am, I yield.
Delegate yields. Delegate Born?
Madam Speaker, I would ask the delegate if he's aware that in 2019, according to the Criminal Sentencing Commission, a report, that there were approximately 24,000 felony guideline sentencing events across the state. However, I would ask the delegate if he was aware that only 1.2 or 1.3, as the delegate from Portsmouth noted, of those events that resulted from jury trials.
Delegate Knight.
Madam Speaker, I would say to the gentleman that I am not aware of that because I do not sit on the Courts Committee. I'm only charged with the judiciary responsibility of the budget of Virginia. That's why I was put in this position. The only thing that I can discuss with a basic amount of knowledge are the numbers. And we don't have any firm numbers. So until we get firm numbers, I would recommend voting against this conference report.
Delegate Born.
I thank the delegate. Madam Speaker, speaking to the conference report at the appropriate time.
Delegate Born, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, we have debated, passed, and will ultimately send, hopefully to the Governor, a series of criminal justice reform and reform measures that will ultimately make our justice system more equitable, more fair, and even handed. Madam Speaker, this is one of, if not the, most important remaining measures that we are considering. And I say that, Madam Speaker, because far too often defendants from black and brown communities, defendants from poor communities are often railroaded and bullied by the system by prosecutors who offer them seemingly, in the moment, reasonable, rational, and appropriate plea deals. But we now know that they are not. And so, Madam Speaker, we're really talking about giving people options to avail themselves of the constitutional rights. Madam Speaker, we have heard, and we have heard about the costs from the delegate about how this may cost upwards of $200 million. But Madam Speaker, I would just submit to the body one final question. What is the cost of not doing it? What is the cost of not enacting this law? The cost is more lives lost behind bars. So, Madam Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, I would urge you wholeheartedly to support the conference report. Move this bill and this conference report onto the Governor's office so that we can continue to reform our justice system in an equitable and fair way.
Thank you, Delegate Born. The delegate from Prince William, Delegate Carol Foy.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Speaking to the conference report.
Delegate Carol Foy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As the first and only public defender ever elected to the Virginia General Assembly, I want to say this. I can unequivocally state that this bill is the most consequential bill that we can pass for criminal justice reform. This will end the undue leverage that prosecutors have over people charged with crimes. It will eliminate the ability for prosecutors to strong-arm people into taking pleas under the threat of jury sentencing. And I want to remind people that the Virginia Indigent Defense Commission stated that there is no significant fiscal impact to pass this measure. So it is disheartening that whenever we are talking about criminal justice reform, we always default and talk about costs. But we can't do what's always politically convenient and expedient or cheap. We must do what's right. And in that, I have to say that to do another study for what we already know, which is that we don't have a clear, equal, and fair justice system, then I want to remind everyone that justice delayed is justice denied. We have an opportunity to stand up and do what's right, to stand in right, and really undo the harms and the hurt that has been caused to so many communities and the distress that has happened for so many people because of the faults that we have in our criminal justice system. So now is the time. We have an opportunity to act and do what's right because the human costs are too great. So I encourage everyone to please vote for fairness, justice, and true equity in our criminal justice system. And please support this conference report.
Thank you, Delegate Carol Foy. Shall the conference report be agreed to? Madam Clerk.
I'll call the names of those I don't see voting yet. Delegate Adams LR.
Nay.
Delegate Adams votes nay. Delegate Bell.
Nay.
Delegate Bell votes nay. Delegate Delaney.
Aye.
Delegate Delaney votes aye. Delegate Edmonds.
No.
Delegate Edmonds votes nay. Delegate Miares.
Nay.
Delegate Miares votes nay. Delegate Orok.
Nay.
Delegate Orok votes nay. Delegate Price.
Delegate Price votes yes.
Delegate Price votes aye. Delegate Van Valkenburg.
Aye.
Delegate Van Valkenburg votes aye. Delegate Ward. Delegate Ward. Delegate Wilt.
Nay.
Delegate Wilt votes nay.
The clerk will please close the roll.
Ayes 55, nays 43, abstentions zero.
Ayes 55, nays 43, abstentions zero. The conference report is agreed to.
Going to page one of the calendar, House Bill 5005. A bill to amend and reenact Chapter 1289 of the 2020 Acts of Assembly, which appropriated funds for the 2020-2022 biennium and provided a portion of revenues for the two years ending respectively on the 30th day of June 2021 and the 30th day of June 2022.
The delegate from Prince William, Delegate Torian.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, speaking to the conference report.
You have the floor.
Madam Speaker and members of the House, last March, this body passed the historic budget, funding bold investments in affordable health care, access to higher education, workers' rights, and new initiatives to advance equity across Virginia. Since then, the people of this Commonwealth and country have endured the most significant public health crisis in 100 years, accompanied by a level of economic decline unseen since the Great Depression, amplifying every pre-existing disparity. Virginia has been resilient but not immune. We were called into this special session to close a $2.8 billion revenue shortfall while tackling the economic and public health demands of the pandemic, as well as to make reforms to Virginia's policing and criminal justice system. The Governor proposed a package of amendments that retained a stopgap freeze on almost all new spending, retaining a sizable unappropriated balance. The House Appropriation Committee then considered over 130 additional amendments before reporting a package that utilized savings and alternative funding sources to protect some of our original budget progress while meeting the current moment's demand. As a result, the vast majority of spending outlined in the budget before you reflects the restoration of critical priorities from the 2020 regular session. the restoration of critical priorities from the 2020 regular session. House and Senate budget leaders worked closely to reconcile any differences and craft a unified budget that addresses Virginia's urgent needs with fiscal responsibility. My priorities throughout the process were maintaining fiscal responsibility, fair funding for criminal justice reform measures, health care, K-12, and higher education. The conference report restores funding to expand early childhood education. It restores at-risk add-on funding to support the educational needs of low-income students in Virginia. It provides $95.2 million in relief to local school divisions, eliminating the impact of the sales tax reforecast on K-12 allocations, and directs $26.9 million in federal funds to support local school divisions' short-term virtual learning technology needs. This budget retains provisions to support our higher education institutions during challenging financial times and allocates $94 million to maintain affordable access to higher education. The conference report protects those caring for our most vulnerable Virginians during this pandemic. It includes overtime pay for personal care attendance and directs $72 million in federal relief funds to these care workers in the form of hazard pay. Nursing homes will continue to receive an additional $20 per patient per day to stabilize an industry under extreme stress. Service providers assisting Virginians with intellectual and developmental disabilities will receive immediate retainer payments and a higher reimbursement rate starting in January 2021. This budget will restore funding to alleviate pressure on our state mental health facilities and provide substantial funding to expand Step Virginia. It also includes $17.5 million to fund a Medicaid adult dental benefit. Madam Speaker, the conference report allocates funding to implement the police and criminal justice reform legislation approved by the General Assembly during this session, including the Marcus Alert System and earned sentence credits. Our budget also restores $1.5 million to pre- and post-incarceration services programs and $3.5 million for local pre-trial and probation services. This budget restores funding to additional public defender and district court clerk positions and adds $7.5 million in HB 599 funding to help recruit and retain qualified police officers. Madam Speaker, the conference report includes unprecedented protection for Virginia's renters and ratepayers during this pandemic. We focused on limiting utility shut-offs and evictions by continuing the moratoriums on both and providing funding to pay down consumer utility debt, establishing repayment plans, and provides additional rent and mortgage assistance. The budget before you achieves all of this while protecting Virginia's AAA bond rating under a diminished revenue reforecast. This budget responsibly invests $89.7 million in Virginia's flexible reserve fund, which is easier to access if needed to address any economic downturn in the near future. Madam Speaker, before I make the motion, I simply want to say thank you for your leadership to our Majority Leader. We thank her for her leadership as well. We certainly thank the governor and members of the Senate Finance and Appropriations Committee. And more importantly, I want to thank the staff of the Appropriations Committee and citizens of the Commonwealth for giving us the opportunity to present to them a budget that we hope will serve them during these very difficult times that we're facing in the Commonwealth. And with that said, Madam Speaker, I move adoption of the conference report.
Shall the conference report be agreed to? Madam Clerk.
Delegate Adams, L.R.
Nay.
Delegate Adams votes nay. Delegate Carr. Delegate Carter. Delegate Delaney.
Aye.
Delegate Delaney votes aye. Delegate Edmonds. Delegate Fowler.
Delegate Fowler votes nay.
Delegate Fowler votes nay. Delegate Jones.
Delegate Jones votes aye.
Delegate Jones votes aye. Delegate Miaras.
Nay.
Delegate Miaras votes nay. Delegate Orok.
Nay.
Delegate Orok votes nay. Delegate Price.
Delegate Price votes aye.
Delegate Price votes aye. Delegate Van Valkenburg.
Delegate Van Valkenburg votes aye.
Delegate Van Valkenburg votes aye. Delegate Wilt.
Nay.
Delegate Wilt votes nay.
Delegate Edmonds votes nay.
Delegate Edmonds votes nay.
The clerk will please close the roll.
Ayes 63, nays 35, abstentions zero.
Ayes 63, nays 35, abstentions zero. The conference report is agreed to. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your hard work, your dedication, and that of the incredible appropriation staff, and as well all the appropriators. We appreciate it. This will make a difference in the lives of Virginians. Madam Clerk.
Going to page two of the calendar, the second conference report for House Bill 5106, a bill to amend and reenact Section 55.1, 1245 of the Code of Virginia relating to landlord and tenant, noncompliance with rental agreement, prohibition on using negative credit information arising from the COVID-19 pandemic against tenants or applicants for tenancy. Penalty, emergency.
The delegate from Fredericksburg, Delegate Cole.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, speaking to the conference report.
Delegate Cole, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The bill, as it left us, would require landlords to use a tenant screening process to discover a negative mark on their credit due to the COVID-19 situation, and it would allow landlords three days to allow a tenant or an applicant to respond to the situation. As the bill has returned back to us from the Senate, we have streamlined the timeframe. If a landlord sends a letter, they must allow seven business days, or if they utilize an electronic means, whether that's a phone call or email, they must allow until the close of business the next day to respond. And we also added a clause exempting landlords who have four or less locations to be exempt from this bill. And so I would ask that we accept the committee conference report.
Shall the conference report be agreed to? Madam Clerk.
Delegate Adams, L.R.
Nay.
Delegate Adams votes nay. Delegate Ayer. Delegate Bagby has voted. Delegate Delaney.
Aye.
Delegate Delaney votes aye. Delegate Edmonds.
Delegate Edmonds votes nay.
Delegate Edmonds votes nay. Delegate Jones.
Delegate Jones votes aye.
Delegate Jones votes aye. Delegate Miaras.
Nay.
Delegate Miaras votes nay. Delegate Orok.
Nay.
Delegate Orok votes nay. Delegate Price.
Aye.
Delegate Price votes aye. Delegate Van Valkenburg.
Aye.
Delegate Van Valkenburg votes aye. Delegate Wilt.
Nay.
Delegate Wilt votes nay.
The clerk will please close the roll.
Ayes 57, nays 42, abstentions zero.
Ayes 57, nays 42, abstentions zero. The conference report is agreed to. The House will be at ease. The House will be at ease.[877.63]